Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call the regular council meeting to order. And right off the bat, look for the adoption of various minutes. If I could have an adoption of the special regular council of June 13th, please.
Move minutes be adopted.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move minutes be received, CIC, June 13th.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move minutes be adopted, regular council, land use, June 13th.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move minutes be adopted, regular council, public hearing, June 13th.
All those in favor, do I have a second or on that?
No second, ma'am.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Second.
And before we get into the public hearing portion of today's agenda, I want to welcome, I see lots of little ballplayers in the front, and it is the 60th anniversary of the Wally Little League. So ladies and gentlemen, it is my honor to acknowledge and commemorate a very special anniversary to the staff, the volunteers, and the players of the Wally Little League. As you know, Wally Little League, in my mind at least, is one of the organizations that has helped put Surrey on the map. With its long history of strong, strong coaching, and the tremendous volunteers that this ball club has, it's built an enormous legacy of great baseball and great players in our city. In fact, Wally's success can be directly attributed to the grandfathers of baseball in the Lower Mainland, the legendary Chuck Bailey, Ora Springnattic. They were tireless in their dedication and their devotion and their passion to the game, and together they built Wally into a national powerhouse. And I think it's also fitting to add Joe Burns to that roster of Wally Little League luminaries. He was instrumental in carrying on that legacy of success and was a driving force behind the club's achievements also in the 2000s. But tonight, I really want to say how proud we are of the Wally Little League and all of the volunteers and players throughout the years. And if I could ask representatives of the club to make their way up to the stage, council and I would like to present you with a very special gift from the city to mark that anniversary. And I'll ask council, please, to join me. Thank you, council, for helping me with that commemoration. And before we move into the public hearing portion, I would also ask that council support me in a resolution to request staff to engage K-9 behavior, to engage K-9 behavior experts and review our dangerous dog bylaw, dog responsibility bylaw, and our current procedures with respect to animal control, and then to report back to us after that analysis and review.
Is that a motion, Madam Mayor?
Put that on the floor, and thank you, Councilor Woods, secondor. All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried. Thank you, council, for your support on that. So moving into the, oh, we have a statement of financial information, first on the agenda, 2015. Is there anyone wishing to comment or ask questions regarding the 2015 statement of financial information that has been provided in the agenda this evening? First call, second call, third and final call. Councilor Woods.
I do have a question.
Okay, councillor, that you haven't asked of staff in advance?
I have asked of staff, but I just would like to make this very clear here. Question is for our general manager of finance, and I'm referring to page 62 of the report. I note on there, there's collection for other authorities. I just want to make it clear that the city is collecting for the province of B.C.'s school tax. And if I read this right, in 2015, they collected $215,134,000. Is that correct?
That's correct, councillor Woods.
Okay, and I'm not going to go through all the numbers for the last five years, Madam Mayor, but I just would like it again for the GM of finance. So over five years, the city has collected over $1 billion for schools in the city of Surrey.
That's correct.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor.
Appreciate that.
That, of course, is capital and operating. Moving on to the public hearing portion of the agenda, first up, Madam Clerk.
The first bylaw is zoning amendment by law 18769. The civic address is 7728 155 Street. The applicant's name is Chang. The applicant seeking to rezone the property from one acre residential to single-family residential. The applicant proposing to subdivide the site into four single-family lots with a consolidation of a portion of the property to the north.
I have no one signed up to speak to this bylaw, nor do I have any correspondence relative to this bylaw. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number one on the agenda this evening? First call, second call, this is the third and final call. Next bylaw, Madam Clerk.
Is official community plan amendment by law 18683 and zoning amendment by law 18684. The civic address is 5750 Panorama Drive, and the applicant is Redicott Panorama Homes Limited. The applicant seeking to redesignate a portion of the site from commercial to multiple residential and rezone the site from comprehensive development to one acre residential, community commercial, multiple residential 30, and multiple residential 70. The applicant's proposing to develop 181 townhouse units, 106 apartment units, and a commercial plaza on the site. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought to reduce the setbacks for the townhouse, apartment, and commercial buildings, as well as increase lot coverage and reduce parking requirements for the apartment site in order to achieve a more urban pedestrian streetscape.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I have 15 pieces of correspondence relative to this bylaw, six in support, nine in opposition, and I have signed up 15 people wishing to speak to the bylaw, two in support, and the rest in opposition. I'm assuming, and it may be a leap, but I'm assuming many of those in opposition, it will be relative to the schools, and I have asked for the school board to have a representative here who might start off that agenda, and I wonder if that representative is here this evening. Thank you. So we'll start the public hearing, hearing from the school board. Thank you.
Good evening, your worshiping council. My name's Emily Watson. I'm the manager of demographics and facilities planning with the Surrey School District. So I was asked to come here this evening to provide a little bit of an update on capital projects that are relevant to this particular application. So on May 20th, the provincial government announced a capital funding package for Surrey. It was a $100 million package with a $25 million contribution from the school district. As a part of that, there were three additions approved to elementary schools. In the South Newton area, Woodward Hill and Sullivan Elementary were both listed as schools for funding approval for additions. The exact scope of these additions is not yet finalized. We're prioritizing the additions within the funding envelope, and certainly Woodward Hill and Sullivan Elementary will be at the top of that list, given the significant enrollment pressures and developments in the area. A likely opening date at this phase, given we're not completely scoped, is, we're publicly saying, September 2018. Of course, we're going to do everything we can to get the additions open before then. At the Board of Education's last meeting, they did hire architects KNBR to work on the Sullivan Elementary addition, and architects ThinkSpace to work on the Woodward Hill addition. In addition to that, the province has requested that the next iteration of the school district's five-year capital plan be submitted by September 9th, 2016, which is an accelerated timeline compared to previous years. At our last Board of Education meeting, I presented for information an updated top 15 capital priorities. Number three on that list was a request for a new standalone elementary school in the South Newton area to relieve pressure on all area elementary schools. Of course, approval and implementation timelines for that are currently unknown, and the number four priority is in addition to the Sullivan Heights Secondary School. So I'm happy to answer any other questions.
I have a question. Councilor Woods.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you very much. I've got Woodward Hill and Sullivan Elementary School additions. What was the other one, please?
Panorama Park Elementary.
Panorama Park Elementary. And you said that as of yet, the school board is not aware of the exact scope, so I assume through the chair that the school board is not aware how many spaces. Is that correct?
Through the mayor, yes, that is correct. What's been talked about for Woodward Hill and Sullivan hypothetically is eight classrooms for each school, which is around 200 students, but that's not something that I can confirm in writing at the current time.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, can I have a follow-up?
Yes, certainly.
Good. Can you tell me right now, in Panorama, Woodward Hill, and Sullivan Elementary, how many portables are on site, please?
Panorama Park, I believe, has two. Woodward Hill, as of September, will have 10. And Sullivan Elementary has five, if you don't include the modular classroom that's considered a more permanent fixture.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. And let me correct my information before where I said I had X number of people speaking. I have 13 people not wishing to speak who are in opposition, two people not wishing to speak who are in support, and I have eight people wishing to speak. Five in support, three opposed. I will call Mark Belling to the microphone, please. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm in favor of the development. My name is Mark Belling, and I own a business, a building at number 81524390, First Avenue, Surrey. I own Fifth Avenue Real Estate Marketing. My family has owned it since 1980. We understand this market, and we serve the developers who engage us to market and sell multifamily developments, so I speak from that perspective. As a background to the development sector, Surrey is being promoted as the number one place to invest in B.C., ranked by the RAING Group, known as the real estate investment network, for four consecutive years, and the number one place to invest in Western Canada, ranked by the Western Investor, and labeled B.C.'s startup city by B.C. Business, set to become Western Canada's next great creative city. Surrey's the second-largest city in B.C. and the 12th largest in the country. Stats Canada survey averages an estimated 800 to 1,000 new residents every month coming to Surrey. Surrey's expected to grow by 320,000 residents, 111,000 homes in the next 25 years. Managing reasonable density on the limited amount of land outside of the L.R. with developments like this is the key to housing affordability and availability. We all know that the real estate market today is exceedingly active and that housing is in very high demand, but do we really know why and what this means to us, our neighbors and our neighborhoods? Essentially, it means that homeownership and even rental costs are on the rise, making it more challenging for people to maintain their current status of living or their current standard of living. Most of us understand that the spiraling values in real estate are simply a result of supply and demand economics at work. A lack of supply in Surrey and other communities today throughout Metro Vancouver is contributing to the very active market. Affordable housing options are driven by development that adds supply to the market. Higher densities equate to the delivery of more affordable housing options. For example, in the Panorama and Sullivan Heights area, combined as of June 22nd, there were only 26 townhomes available for resale on MLS, compared to 49 sold in the last two months, demonstrating that there's clearly not enough supply to meet the current demand in this neighborhood, creating upward pressure on home prices, impacting affordability for Surrey. Basic economics support the notion that once supply and demand are balanced, prices will stabilize, expanding affordability. The Panorama neighborhood needs this project and others to meet the current demand levels, which keep the Surrey economy performing. New homes and businesses also add to the city's property tax base, of which a portion goes towards schools. I see this townhouse portion of this site as the new single-family affordable solution. If projects like this are not approved, the current gap between supply and demand will only continue to grow, driving income-based affordability out of the housing market in Surrey while driving rental values even higher. As for the economic development of the neighborhood itself, the existing businesses near this site along Highway 10 and 152 Street require additional residents to sustain their businesses, which is evident by the current leasing challenges in Panorama Village. The residents of this development will add to the support of the existing and new businesses generated by the developer. And as for the community safety, with new residents in place, this development is a better alternative than the vacant lands currently in place. Thanks for hearing my thoughts. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Thank you.
Councilor Starcheck has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a quick question regarding the stats regarding sale and resale. Where did those numbers come from?
They came from MLS, Surrey Real Estate Board.
And how recent?
June 22nd.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, councillor. Councilor Woods?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Do you live, sir, in the area?
I live in Langley, but I have numerous residential holdings in Surrey.
Thank you very much, and one other question. There was an article in the Vancouver Sun this weekend with regards to housing in the province. Did you read that article, sir?
No, I was in Polynesia.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's an interesting question, councillor. Gordon Gray.
Not like my learned friend ahead of me. I do live in the area, and I appreciate the area. I've been in the area on 58th Avenue for the last 14 years in Skyline's development. I don't have a great problem with the development of this property. My problem is what they want to do with the property. They want to not have the original setbacks that everybody else in the neighborhoods have. They want to lower the parking. There is no parking in the neighborhood now for what is there. The streets, Surrey bylaws make a fortune. If you're parked too close to an unmarked crosswalk, you got a ticket, and there's 50 bucks more. This happens every day, every weekend, and there's just not enough parking in the area as it is. To lower the parking standards to put this many units in is only going to congest the streets more, and there will be no parking. We have a problem even in our complex where people cannot find a parking spot on the street, so they take up our visitor parking at nights because they can't find a parking spot on the street besides the common property, graduates, that everybody has. The setbacks, the commercial buildings would be great. I just think if they have to lower the parking and the residential area, they should lower the amount of units they plan to put in so they have enough space for the parking.
Thank you, Mr. Gray, for your comments. Ron Fawcett.
Hello, my name is Ron Fawcett, and I represent the Kelson Group, which is the building that is going to own and operate the apartment building that's on this location. Our company has been in this rental business since 1961. Our first apartment was 1974. We're a large company. I'm the president. My sons, Jason and Kelly, which the Kelson name comes from, they are the operators. We operate in print storage, Kamloops, Clonan, Langley, and Abbotsford. We have this location, plus we have two others in Surrey that we will be working with the planning department shortly. We met with them earlier today. We will be part of Surrey's environment. We have 3,500 rental units. This is 106-unit mixed one and two bedrooms. It's absolutely condo quality, washer, dryer, high-end appliances, amenity room, large fitness area. There's no surface parking. Everything is underground. We have a large bike area. We have a large outside amenity area, which is at the back of the building, can't be seen from the front. And we also have a large community garden area, which is most rental buildings don't have. This will not be a strata titled building. It will remain with our company and our rental portfolio. I think people have concerns about rental buildings. Our clients, and particularly in this building, will be the same as what is in the rest of the neighborhood. That usually happens that the neighborhood locates where they want to live, so it'll be basically the same. We have a strong living management system. It's much stronger than normal condo buildings, and we do know how to deal with any problems. Schoolchildren will not be part of our clientele. Not that we will force that, they just don't live in this type of the building. We have a building, 105 units, we're just completing in Langley, and there's not one child in the whole building. It's fully rented. That's not saying that somewhere down the road, one of our clients does have children, but it won't be a problem.
Might conceive. One of your clients could conceive.
As long-term landlords, we keep our rents very attractive in the market. We're not the high end. We like to keep our tenants, so this building will be quite an asset to the neighborhood.
Thank you for your comments. I have a question from a couple of councillors. Councilor Woods?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question, sir, is when would you anticipate starting construction of that, your apartment building?
Excuse me, I have a bit of a hearing last attempt to when.
Am I mic on? When would you anticipate starting building, that building?
We will start whenever it's permitted.
Whenever it's permitted?
Yeah.
Okay. When would your completion date be, anticipated?
Probably 15 months after.
Okay, so if it's, if you get approval in September, you would start right away?
It'd probably be two years plus.
Two years?
Yeah.
Two years out. Okay, just to be clear through your chair, Madam Mayor, would you rent two individuals that had children?
You cannot discriminate. Our company doesn't.
Okay, so you would?
We would have to, but it just doesn't attract that type of clientele.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam.
Thank you. Councilor Hayne?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. It's a question to yourself and perhaps as well through to staff, and it's with respect to the parking. There's a comment, and a previous delegation mentioned a reduction in parking. The corporate report that I have says that parking, that there would be parking reductions for the apartment complex itself, not parking reductions for the townhouses and so on. My question to you and as well through to staff is, from your experience in the rental business, is there a business case to suggest that parking reductions are justified in terms of the typical tenant that you attract to your buildings? What's been your experience, and as well, how is engineering justifying those reductions as well? Thank you.
So we have some buildings where we don't even have one parking spot for each suite. This building, I think it's 1.3, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes.
We, as a, we need enough parking for our tenants. We have no concerns that there will not be enough parking for our tenants in this building, for our experience of what our clients need, so.
Okay, and through to staff, our collective, our rationale then for relaxation on parking requirements in a rental building versus a strata building?
Yeah, it is, it is quite near transit, high density for transit. Also, the roads they're constructing on there are also adding off-site, significant off-site parking, on-street parking.
Okay. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Councilor Villanue?
I'm wondering if you can give me an idea of the square footage in the units in the rental building?
The square footage of each unit?
Yes. Approximately?
I think the one-bedrooms are about 654. The twos are 835 and up. So there are some that are even 1,100 square feet.
So are?
We always make sure that our suites are the biggest in the rental market.
Okay, so they're two- and three-bedroom apartments?
There's.
One and two-bedroom or?
Yes, there's one and two bedrooms. I think there's four studio units, there's a mixed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor, and thank you, sir, for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Next up, I have Rob King. Mr. King?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. I'm Rob King, a partner in Redicott Panorama Homes, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today on our proposed development. Wanted to take this opportunity to lay out our rationale in coming up with a proposal before you, and explain the outreach program within the community that we undertook that has helped shape the proposal with input from both staff and from council. First, we believe that providing a diversity of housing options that meet the long-term needs of Surrey is important. To that end, we have made sure that the proposal includes a purpose-built rental building, as well as a variety of townhouse options that will serve first-time buyers, the downsized buyer, and the mature renter within the same community. In addition, we want to make sure that we provided an opportunity for some additional commercial that could complement but not overwhelm the mature, the existing adjacent businesses. We reached out to the neighborhood as our project planning involved to make sure we were addressing their needs as best we could. Parking was identified as an issue early on, and we heard it again tonight. So our proposal includes much-needed additional parking for the neighborhood by widening Panorama Street to allow for free parking and creating new parking along a new city road that will go through the center of the property. In our discussions with the YMCA, they identified parking as one of the main reasons there was a perception in the community that they were at capacity, which they confirmed they're not. Also, we have made sure that an unprecedented 78% of our townhouses have double-car garages to give the new community a better feel and less use of street parking. Even though we know there is a need for rental product in the neighborhood, we heard from the community that they had concerns about past rental projects and how they were managed. It is for that reason we are very careful in selecting Kelson Property Group, who you just heard from, who has a history of building rental communities and keeping them for the long term. And of course, we heard loudly about schools, so we have spent time with the school board and demographers to try to truly... and demographers to try to truly understand the impact of our development on the local schools and to communicate those numbers to the community through public meetings and door knocks. To that end, we plan on phasing in our project, the townhouse portion, over a number of years to give enough, to be as less impactful as possible and give time for the new funding that was recently announced for those schools to see the benefit of that. I truly believe that the development community and the neighborhood associations, if they just worked together to get Victoria to fund the growing needs of the Surrey school system instead of opposing each other, we would have a much better result. Our goals are really the same. There's another groups, another group of folks we have heard from who are not as well-organized as those concerned about the school issue. And those folks have a common concern over affordability and availability. With 900 new people moving to Surrey a month, without new supply, affordability could slip away from the average working family. We heard from folks who wanted to know if there was a product in our development that they could downsize to from a single-family home and stay in the neighborhood, which they love. For them, we have 31 units that are larger and can be equipped with elevators. It has been an extensive process and has resulted in changes that have sometimes been difficult to incorporate, but the end result is a project that has been improved by the community's input and by addressing council's concerns. Thank you.
Mr. King, could I just ask you, the 31 units you have with the elevators that are proposed to be more suitable for the senior living, are those in the first phase of your construction schedule?
The majority of them are, and it's not as much seniors as downsizers. We think there is a market in the neighborhood for folks with a single-family house that may want to help their children out, sell their family house, move into something less expensive in the same neighborhood, but not have to live in 1,200 square feet, so these are 2,000 square-foot units.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Villanueva?
I just, I may be asking the wrong person, but I know in the summary information that you provided for me, it said that the Sullivan High Secondary School was to increase from 1,015,00 spaces implemented by 2017, 2018. Has that been confirmed? Because I didn't hear that with the school board report.
Yeah.
Is there addition on the high school?
No.
Perhaps confirmed?
Not yet. Okay, yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll get that confirmation.
Okay.
Did you have that response, Mr. King?
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I heard the response that it hasn't been confirmed.
Okay, I'll get that.
That was their information at the time, so.
We'll get that from the school board representative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Starchuk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With regards to the phasing, when we take a look at the diagram that was provided to us with, you know, one and two and three and four, where does the apartment fit into the phasing portion?
Yeah, sorry, the phasing was only for the townhouse portion. From our studies, that would be the portion that would have the most impact on the schools.
Okay, and with regards to the unit numbers, do you have the unit numbers for each particular phase?
We do. Phase one is 33 units, and what we, what we proposed in our phasing plan is the maximum number of units that would be occupied by the fall of each year. And so you could see that it would be over the course of?
Madam Mayor, excuse me, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Can you put the mic a little closer?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. King, they're having a hard time hearing you.
I'll just move.
You're too tall?
Hopefully that's better. The first phase would be 33 units, which we estimate the earliest we could complete those is the fall of 2017.
And the second, third, and fourth phase?
It would be roughly 50 additional units per year. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor. And thank you, Mr. King, for your comments.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
I just wanted to say, I didn't understand when the rental building would be built.
I couldn't hear the response to that.
I believe the response relative to the rental building was that it would be concluded within about 15 months of approval, and it would be in the first phase.
The rental building?
Am I correct in that?
That's correct.
A nod would be?
First phase?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Counselor. Next up, I have Sonia Marcinkowski, and I apologize for that, I'm sure it's wrong.
[inaudible]
No, I guess, I can imagine that, it looks difficult. How would you pronounce that?
Marcinkowski.
There you go. Welcome, Sonia.
Madam Mayor, dear councilors, my name is Sonia Marcinkowski, as you know, and I'm secretary of the Board of Directors of the Panorama Neighborhood Association. I have an official statement that I wish to read from the PNA that has been approved by our president. I will also have a personal statement as a resident.
Sure, go ahead.
Our residents and our community association have watched this project since day one. In many ways, this development is why we created our association. We were worried about it, and someone on council gave us the wise advice to give our community a voice through a community association. But in regards to this particular project, at no point do we feel like we were heard. In 2013, during a meeting at City Hall with Don Loomis and then-City Councilor Arberind Arizori, we expressed that we were concerned about what those acres would become. We asked to be kept in the loop. Not very long after that, we found out that it had been sold to Fairborn Homes, who told us that the city planning department had recommended that this be sold to a townhouse developer. When Fairborn Homes told us they were putting 201 townhouses, an apartment building, and a commercial space, we told them that this was a density our neighborhood could not handle. We explained the school overcrowding issue, the parking issue, the traffic issue at 152nd and Highway 10. After Fairborn sold it to Redicop Development, we met with the city planner and Mr. Dillon from Redicop, and we told them, as we had before, that this development would affect our schools dramatically. We talked about Sullivan Elementary having sixth graders in several portables already. We talked about Sullivan High School being beyond capacity with students in alternate shifts. We talked about Cambridge Elementary, probably the likely backup catchment school, having already, being only 10 years old and already having many portables. While the developer tells you that they are advocating for Sullivan Elementary to get an expansion, they now have it, please point out to them that they have no way of knowing where the catchment boundaries may end up, and please consider that there are no expansion plans for Cambridge Elementary. In May 2015, we attended an open house with Redicop where they unveiled their redesign. In James Redicop's words, "They made it more their style," but it was basically the same proposal as Fairborn's, except that they reduced the townhouses from 201 to 198. During that open house, residents stated over and over that this was an incredibly dense development, but James Redicop asked us if we wanted a blue fence or a red fence during construction. We wondered what the point of the open house was. Clearly to them, this was an administrative step to get through and actually reaching out to our community. Might get emotional here. The city planner attached to this proposal later shared with us some of the comments from that session, and we heard nothing to indicate that there was any support whatsoever for this proposal. The open house was not as crowded as we had expected, and when we asked residents who did not attend this session why they didn't go, they told us, "It's a done deal. The city does what developers want." To take the pulse of our community on this issue, we initiated an online petition, whose main concern was to reach out and find out where people really stood on this issue. If there was no opposition from our community, we would let it be. The petition was signed by almost 300 people in the span of a couple weeks. Every single comment was against, and the opposition was mainly centered over the school overcrowding issue, but also many pointed out to how this would affect the quality of life in our neighborhood, including parking and traffic issues at one of the busiest street corners in South Newton and right next to the YMCA, which has over 10,000 members, and whose well-documented lack of parking space plagues the lives of residents on 57 and 58th Avenue. In December 2015, we requested to meet with the city planner and the Redicop representative. We expressed to them in no uncertain terms that this was too many townhouses for that particular area of South Newton, that it would greatly affect our schools and our quality of life. We suggested that they redesign a little bit and target more to senior buyers. On February 25th, we contacted the Redicop representative and asked if there were any updates. A nice, large, commercial space for lease had appeared on the lot. He informed us there were no changes and that the sign was a mistake. He told us that Mr. Burisma, who was on paternity leave for, was on paternity leave for a few more weeks. So we were quite surprised to hear that this went to council 11 days later on March 7th. We would have been here otherwise. It was the same proposal we had seen in the fall with nothing that addressed our school overcrowding issues, parking, and traffic concerns. In late April, we had a private meeting with James Redicop and Jess Dillon, who unveiled to three PNA representatives the new design. We were shocked to see that 198 townhouses were now 181 townhouses, with the rest being the same except for some increase to the amenity room to address the direct request from city council on March 7. Mr. Redicop was quite pleased to inform us that there would be a kiddie park and a community garden, not what we had asked. Mr. Redicop has not met the community halfway. He hasn't met us even a tenth of the way. How is the possibility of an elevator shaft responding to our request to redesign to target seniors? Seniors do not buy three-level townhouses. On May 10th, Redicop Development held an information session at the YMCA. The city planning report shows that 118 people signed the attendance list. Madam Mayor, councilors, I personally attended this meeting with a baby in a stroller. I could not move anywhere. I can tell you that the only reason there were not more names on that list was because people were lined around the corner for half an hour trying to get in that very large room. We have pictures of that event, and there were well over 100 people that attended. Redicop had a dozen pencils and could not fit all the people that wanted to see the plans. I never got in the room, but I knew the plans. Residents were borrowing colored pencils from the daycare to write their comment sheets. To say that our community showed up and spoke up that day is an understatement. Counselor Villanueva, on March 7th, had stated that it was important for the community to be consulted on this project. Madam Mayor, councilors, we were consulted, we answered, and we were again completely ignored. The documents before council today have no significant changes from the ones shown to our community on May 10th. Again, we asked, "What is the point of an open house? How can so many people show up at an open house and say they disagree with the proposal, and the developer is still allowed to send it to council with zero modifications?" I had an email exchange with the city planner attached to this proposal on June 14th, after it made first and second reading, and asked him, "I need water." Serve water? Thank you. I had an email exchange with the city planner attached to this proposal on June 14th, after it made first and second reading, and I asked him, because I knew that he knew that the community was against it, so I asked, "Is it correct wording to say that you as a planner are recommending this proposal?" The city planner told me, your city planner told me, and I quote, "It means I am presenting it to council for their consideration." Madam Mayor and councilors, this only rests before you. My community has spoken against it on an online petition, 290 signatures, in dozens of letters and calls. Cambridge Elementary children told you in a letter they were against this, and my community said at two open houses it was against it. The school board has written that it was not in favor of it because it was not part of the NCP, and it was never meant to be a housing development. If you have driven in our neighborhood, you may have noticed that we have those pretty green signs and construction everywhere. Just a couple blocks away, on 60th and 152nd, there is a development called Evoke. It's only half-built, it's sold out, but barely moved in. 86 units of lovely, family-friendly townhouses across the street from Sullivan Elementary, two blocks away from Cambridge Elementary. Across the street from Evoke, right across the street on the corner of 60th and 152nd, there is a pretty green sign showing an application for 20 townhouses. This is application 15-0210. I don't know where it's at. You have to look at the big picture. By approving this development, council will be guaranteeing that our kids for an entire generation will be in portables. The Panorama Neighborhood Association is not opposing a development on this lot. It is opposing this development, a development that perpetuates the overcrowding of our schools, that will dramatically affect one of the busiest areas of our neighborhood. We oppose this development as it has been drawn, drawn out with a complete disregard of our community who spoke up in large numbers and loudly. I know for a fact that developers can work with communities. This has not been the case. Please listen to the people who have given you this position. We ask you to ask Redicop to come back with a genuine attempt at building a reasonable blend of houses and some townhouses with a mix of densities, or maybe look at the possibility of using part of the last remaining large lot in our neighborhood to build another school, which we desperately need. If this proposal goes through as it stands, you will have ignored the unified voice of hundreds of residents, of children of Sullivan Elementary, Cambridge Elementary, and Sullivan High School. You will have ignored the voices of hurt parents who have been told their French immersion school that they call Woodward Hill has to be cut because of overcrowding, even after an addition was announced. This is not a situation where some are in favor and some are against. My community wants you to reject this proposal. Sorry, I was a bit.
Thank you for your comments.
My personal comment was in response to the gentleman from the Kelson Group about the rental apartment, and in view of the fact that they can't discriminate against people they can't say, I would tell you that my personal opinion is that this rental building, if they can't discriminate, will be full of young families or single parents. If I was a single mom with a child, I would move into that building. I would love living there. There will be children in that building, in this neighborhood.
Thank you for your comments.
There's no questions?
No. No questions. Oh, Counselor Villanueva has a question?
I guess I have a question.
Sure.
Because you did state that the neighborhood would work with the developer for a project in this area, yet you seem pretty adamant that the area can't take any more housing, so I'm wondering if the?
Our position is that our neighborhood might have possibly reached its maximum for townhouse development. We have a great lack in houses. Like, that's what's missing in our neighborhood is houses, and we know that the 2004 amendment to the NCP was for some small-lot housing, and we would encourage the city to give us more small-lot housing so that people that want to move from a townhouse to a small house with a low yard have that option. We currently do not have that option because it's all about townhouses at this point.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, I have Stephen, no, 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 no. Please be respectful of the chambers and no clapping. I have next up a Steve Henderson.
Evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, Mr. Henderson.
My name is Steve Henderson. I am a resident of the Sullivan Panorama Neighborhood. I'm also the vice president of the Panorama Neighborhood Association and a friend and colleague of Sonia, who just spoke. Further to what Sonia was saying, it is important for you to understand, the Panorama Neighborhood Association is not opposed to development on the property. However, development in this neighborhood, in South Newton, needs to be done responsibly with due consideration to the impact to the neighborhood. This development does not meet this test. This plot of land gives the city an opportunity to build something unique, something different, something outside the box, not more cookie-cutter townhomes. As Sonia has stated, we would like to see a development targeted towards seniors, single-family small-lot homes. small lot homes, or perhaps keeping within the institutional zoning a long-term care facility or something to that effect. What we're not in favor of is something that's going to exacerbate the overcrowding in our already crowded schools. Sorry, I lost my spot. Hold on one second. In its current format and the current proposal, the impact on schools is unrealistic, and the projected number that is in the proposal, which I believe the Surrey School Board provided, of, I think, 93 children between elementary and senior, 93 school age children, is also off the mark. If you use my townhouse complex, Highbury, which is about a two-minute walk up 58th Avenue, as an example, the ratio of children to units in Highbury is one child for every 1.33 units. If you extrapolate that to this development, now granted, this is not a scientific study, but extrapolated to this development, the townhouses alone, the 181 in the proposal, would have 136 kids.
I think the way the school board does their assessment, and I defer to our school board representative, but that is, they don't all start school at the same time, and as some are going through the process, some are graduating out of it. So while that number is probably mathematically correct, I'm not sure throughout the course of when you start and when you finish, that the analysis, I believe, is, unless I'm mistaken, that's the way the school... I'm getting a nod there, that that's the way their analysis is done.
But I'm using my townhouse complex as an example of a ratio, right?
Yeah, I'm just telling you how they do the calculation.
I understand, but if it's a possibility in my complex, maybe it's a possibility in the new one. Further to that, with the changes and the growth in the real estate market and the small families and young families being priced out of large, single-family homes and being driven to townhouse complexes, I don't think the numbers, and this has all changed in the past six to 12 months, or the inflation, the price of homes has become out of reach for most single families, or young single families. They're being driven to townhouses out of sheer necessity. So this is what is going to be attracted to this development. So before any further development continues or before this proposal is approved, we ask the council wait for the census results that were recently inputted to Stats Canada and direct the staff to conduct further research on the impact of what this development would have on our neighborhood. We understand the need for supply. We understand the laws of supply and demand. However, there cannot be supply without the infrastructure to match. The schools need to be there, the parking needs to be there, the desks for the kids need to be there. As stated by a previous speaker, this development will be attracting young families, and because of that, and because, and further to what I said and Sonya has said, we ask that you reject this proposal in its current format. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Mr. Henderson. Next up, I have Bill, I think it's Sengira.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. My name's Bill Sengira, and I'm a business consultant and risk manager with White Spot Limited, and also a partner franchisee at the Panorama White Spot location, which actually backs onto this piece of property. We are in support of the development. We feel that it'll complete the neighborhood. Four of the partners live in Surrey, as far as the franchisee, and a number of years ago, my family and I decided that that was the area that we would invest in, and we'd be there for at least the next 20 years, as far as the business would allow.
And I'm sorry, where did you say your business was, sir?
It's 152nd Highway 10, the Panorama White Spot, right in the complex in Panorama Village.
Thank you.
As somebody said earlier, there are leasing challenges within the Panorama Village area already on the upper level, and we feel that with this development, it'll bring new customers to all the businesses, not only White Spot. And at the same time, with increased business also means increased jobs to that area as White Spot is a family-oriented business, and with family-oriented townhomes, it would be, well, the neighborhood would be well represented by White Spot as well. We know there's a need for housing in Surrey, and with the addition of these units, it would definitely help all the businesses in that area, on all four corners of that The developer, we've done our research as well, developer has a good track record of other developments in Vancouver, the UBC area, and in Abbotsford. The development, we feel, has many community benefits as well, and we feel that, again, you should look at approving this, and at the same time, again, it will help the businesses in the area, it will increase jobs. Just from my own calculations, just from White Spot's perspective, a townhouse development of this side would, actually, we would add anywhere from five to 10 new jobs as it fades through as well. And for young individuals living in that community, it'd be a great first start for them as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sengira, for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? You can be seated, Mr. Sengira. You, sir?
Yes, sir.
Sure, and then...
About four or five hands in there.
Pardon me?
It was about four or five hands. Come on up.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, Mayor, good evening.
Good evening, sir. Could you, yes, does that work better? Yes, perfect.
That's better.
Give your name and address for the clerk.
My name is Henry Zea. I live at 5674 149 A Street, literally right behind the YMCA. I oppose this development for many reasons that have already been said tonight. Primarily, the parking is a big issue to me. I can never find parking on my block. There's no parking two to three blocks north of the YMCA. This additional street parking that this development might bring is going to be occupied by YMCA parking. It's not going to make a difference in my mind. I'm not opposed to developing this area like it's been said, just it's the wrong type of housing in my opinion. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you for your comments, sir.
Thank you.
And I believe there was a gal at the very back there?
Madam Mayor, she had a question.
Oh, just a moment, please. Sorry, I didn't see. I apologize, councillor. Councillor Hayton had a question for you, sir. Was it for him or for staff?
Yeah, yeah.
It was for him. My apologies, I didn't see, I didn't look at the screen.
No worries.
Sorry to make you get back up. In your opinion, a lot of the parking issues that have been referenced tonight and yourself, do you attribute, and I know it's not scientific, but do you attribute a lot of that to YMCA patrons that are coming and parking throughout the community to utilize the YMCA versus resident parking? Because certainly someone else also mentioned small lot, single family, and from my experience on council, small lot, single family creates far more parking issues than townhouses do because you get secondary suites and so on and so on, creating a lot of parking issues. So I'm just wondering if you could characterize what you see as being the main parking problem?
The main parking problem is that it's not a simple answer, that's why I'm thinking about it.
Fair enough.
The YMCA has sold more memberships than it should have. They should have stopped a very long time ago, their parking lot. I'm going to take a wild guess, barely holds 100 vehicles, 150 vehicles, and to me, that seems way too few parking stalls for 10,000 memberships. I'm not even sure if they have a ceiling for their memberships or if they plan to have one.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate your insights. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor. And I think there was a gal at the very back there. Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Neovie Patsikakis. I'm a retired Surrey teacher, and I taught my last three years at Cambridge Elementary School. I would like to quickly talk about the reason why I'm up here. I have worked and I have experienced and seen other teachers working in Portables, and if with this development we will see more Portables, then I am very much against it. We have a generation of kids that have grown up and taught in Portables, which, sorry, which lack fresh air, sometimes they're muddy, sometimes they're too hot, too cold. The children are feeling excluded. Often, there's not enough gym space, there aren't enough computers. You cannot move computers into Portables, yet we did have children transporting computers from the library to the Portables, which was a lot of educational time wasted, and those kids were not always supervised. In addition, when you have overcrowding, there aren't enough rooms for specialists, even if we do get the specialists that are required. I worked in a room, I was a learning support teacher, I worked in a room that normally fits a maximum of four intermediate students. I often had to work with six, seven, or more students who ended up outside the room using primary desks. My question is, how is council working with the ministry? The funding, it has been stated over and over that has been provided, is not enough. Why is council not demanding space for a brand-new school from the developer? Overcrowded high schools as well result in youth having problems and not being able to participate fully in the life of the school. Who will stand up for them? I hope this elected body does. I'm against any development that stresses our educational system. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Show of hands for how many that did not sign up but would like to speak. Okay, at the front here in yellow.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. My name is Valerie Zea. I am at 5674 149 A Street. I just wanted to bring to your attention that just west of 144th Avenue, between Highway 10 and 64 Avenue, we have hundreds of townhomes under construction. I'm not talking about 200, I'm talking hundreds. Currently, we have zero capacity at any of the schools starting this September. Sullivan Heights Secondary, even if you were to move into the townhomes across the street, you have to go to Frank Hurt, you can't even get into Panorama, they are full. I also wanted to bring to your attention that the population of Surrey is now at about 516,000, give or take. The population of Vancouver is about 603,000, give or take. We have one major hospital, if you include Peace Arch, which is White Rock, that's two, whereas Vancouver has five major hospitals, and I had the unfortunate task of spending some time in hospital in April, and every time that I was in emergency and the paramedics came in, that's all they said, "We need two more hospitals here, we need two more hospitals." So I oppose this development because it's too high density, we don't have the infrastructure in place to maintain this type of population growth in such a short run. It's taken its toll on hospitals, on our education system, like, we need to slow down and not exasperate this problem that currently exists within our community, because our communities are only being half-constructed, not fully constructed. And also, I oppose this development because of the parking situation. The parking in the plaza even where the White Spot is, is constantly full. Like, there is just such restrictions on parking in our area, and we are, the bylaw officers are present on a regular basis as well. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much for your comments tonight.
Thank you so much.
Yes. And then I think there's a gentleman there, yep. You're next, sir.
My name's Jennifer Dirksen. I live at 6134 181 A Street. So this development isn't in my backyard, but it definitely impacts me, and it develops, is, all of the development that's going on in Surrey is impacting me. I have four children in the school system, one who's finished, one who has another day or two, and then he's done, but I still have two more. We have relocated in the Surrey school system following the French immersion program, and when I say relocated, I mean picked up our house and moved and moved, because it keeps having to be moved to where there is space. My oldest daughter, who's attending SFU right now, when it came time to make a choice for which school to go to, they had relocated, the French immersion program was in Sullivan. We were all ready to go, we were all ready to move, and they moved the French immersion program. She's third-year university, and she had to move for her grade eight year because at that point Sullivan was too full. So now, I have my next daughter, who's coming into grade six, going into grade seven, we relocated to Tweedsmere to follow the French immersion program, to try and find the space in Surrey School, because that's how the French immersion goes, you have to find the holes. There aren't any more holes. Now, they've found one, they've created a new school in Clayton, so my 11-year-old daughter is going to get up in the morning, and instead of walking to Lord Tweedsmere, where we moved within our Surrey community, because we didn't want to leave this great city and we didn't want to leave this great school system, she'll hear the morning bell at Tweedsmere, can hear it from her bedroom. My 17-year-old son, literally, first bell is when he rolls out of bed to make it in time for second bell, we're that close. She will need to walk for 45 minutes to get to the new school she will be moved to. She can't walk up the hill and take the bus because there is no bus going to the new school. She won't be allowed to walk home at night because there isn't adequate lighting on that street. She won't be able to ride her bike to the school because the sidewalks are in such poor condition that I don't feel that she could safely maneuver it. Her little brother, who has to go to the other school on the other end of town, will be late for school probably every day, because although the school is only 10 minutes from our house, when you put me and the other five, six, seven, eight hundred parents that will need to drive to this school in line, down a one-way street with a little ditch on one side and a rotten sidewalk on the other, no turnaround, no loop, I'm going to have to drive through Surrey up to Langley to get back to Surrey to take my child to elementary school. So her brother, in grade three and grade four, will be in the car at 7:30 in the morning so that he can get to school that is a 12-minute walk from our house and a three-minute drive, because there aren't enough schools. I'm looking at my stats here, and Lord Tweedsmere is at 157% capacity. Sullivan, which is its partner, those are the two that share the burden, is at 155% capacity. We are looking at 1,100 kids already, too many, in our school system. Would any of you like to sit in a room with 1,100 teenagers? Would you like to spend the day with 1,100 teenagers? There's not enough space in our schools, there's not enough space in our elementary schools, and while you guys are taking on excellent builders, you're working with great builders, reputable builders, knowledgeable builders, fantastic people, there isn't the space that the people are going to do in the neighborhood until you guys change what you're doing. We need you to look out for our city. We need you to look at how many we have, how many you want to bring. And I encourage people to come here. This is a great city that we live in. I don't want to raise my kids anywhere else. But I also don't want my children to not be able to go to the school. And I made the point about my school because we're in French immersion, but if my petition with the school trustees, Emily, continues, they won't move French immersion. And my daughter will get to go to the school that she can hear the bell from. And that's fantastic. That's going to make me really, really happy. What's not going to make me happy is my neighbor two doors down, whose boys go to English school and they go to Don Christian. Now they're not going to get to go to the school. So here we are. We are two houses away. Our children play together every day after school. They are wonderful kids. We are great families. One of us loses. That's not fair, that we're losing because the planning is being done in a way that tells our kids they're not important, they can't go to their community school. My daughter will be dropping swim club because they swim from 6:30 until... 6:30? Try and get a 12-year-old up at 6:30. She's in the pool at 6:15 at Greenway Outdoor Pool, and she gets out of the pool at 7:30 in the morning. And when she is in the eighth grade, she is going to dry off and walk up the hill and go to Lord Tweedsmere. But if you move her when she's in the ninth grade, she will no longer be swimming because she can't get there. She won't be able to make it. I understand that it's going on. I have one more request that I want for you guys. Because I know that we make comments, and I know that we say portables. And we say portables, and then we say additions, and everybody's face lights up. But that addition, you're just building a building that takes the place of the portables. You're not creating considerable new space. So when you hear the Woodward Hill, who has 740 kids right now in a school that should only have 505, and they get an addition, and everybody's happy about it, that addition is just taking the kids in the 10, 12 portables and shoving them in a solid building. It's awesome because our school district doesn't have to pay for those portables. It's actually finally going to come from the province. But make no mistake, you're not getting new space. You're not adding 10, 12, 13, 14, 15 new classrooms to take on new people. You're just shifting the existing people. And then you're going to have to add more portables if you add more people. So you have questions, and then I have one question for you at the end. Sorry.
Sorry. Councillor Gill has questions.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jennifer, just in terms of your comments, I do sincerely thank you for your comments, but certainly there are two problems we have. One is the existing pressures that we have on the school, and one is the future problems that we have. So I'm just trying to better understand from your situation, given where we're at today.
Yes.
What have you done in context to the comments that you've made in relation to the existing problem that we have? And in the context of some of the future problems we have? Right now, we're at a predicament, whereas that we are over-capacity. So that's a given.
Absolutely. Yep.
So I understand that the school board is reacting, and they react generally at a point where the capacity gets to X. And I'm not even quite sure where X is. So I just want you to give me some advice in terms of how to deal with both the existing situation that we have and some advice in terms of moving forward in terms of the future situation that we have.
And you've asked what I've done. So I took the day off my work and got childcare for my children, and I went over to the B.C. Legislature with another group of very strong-minded parents to ask the provincial government to hurry up and give you all some money so that you can do some spending and put some schools in. So we are behind you in doing that, but it takes time. It's a slow-moving wheel, and we pushed and challenged and are continuing to challenge. I've had meetings with Stephanie Kadu. I am attending the school trustees' meetings. We are trying to think outside the box. We are trying to become creative and find ways to find solutions. I am challenging you to do the same. You work with amazing developers. Are any of them interested in being a part of making the future of Surrey an amazing one faster? Is there anyone who wants to jump on board and put their name on a school and donate a piece of property? Because I bet there's a lot of parents that would happily, happily take a branded school if it was a school that made their neighborhood a better place. So that's what I'm actively doing for the immediate, trying to make some changes. And I'm here. I'm here. I have children, I have friends and family looking after the things that I need to do. And constantly looking to try and find solutions. What you're doing right now, talking about this particular proposal, puts an incredible stress and pressure on both Sullivan and Lord Tweedsmere as your two high schools. There is no solution to ease the pressure on those in the school district's plan. They have so many things they have to do, it's not even on the list. So anyone that goes into this project or any other projects that are approved between here and Cloverdale-Clayton down that corridor doesn't have a high school. They literally don't have a high school. They're full. So why don't you ask a builder to throw an annex? There's a great parking lot at Tweedsmere. Make it six stories high, just a really nice, simple Lego building, couple of gyms, maybe some biology labs, four modular sets of classrooms on top. There's your solution.
So Jennifer, I would suggest to you that in our planning processes that we use at the city, that we have generally a local area plan that we do, our neighborhood concept plan that we generally do. And if I were to tell you that our numbers are probably within 2% in terms of what our projections are in terms of density.
Right.
I think that's an exceptionally good job in terms of what we do in terms of our planning process. So again, I ask you that if we are planning within the context of what we believe our long-term plans are, and we are not getting cooperation, for better choice of words, in terms of the understanding and the parallel process that we need to see, we're quite in a predicament ourselves.
Did you plan to add an extra 550 students to Sullivan beyond its capacity?
Well, certainly, I think that in the NCP that we currently have, I believe, to the best of my knowledge, I might be asking the Mr. Planner for some assistance. But certainly, when it comes to overall density for that particular NCP, Mr. Planner, I'm not sure if you can help me, but certainly I think we are on target in terms of the overall units that we've described in that particular NCP.
Did you plan to add an extra 600 students to Lord Tweedsmere?
I'm going to ask Mr. Planner for direction, if I may.
Yeah, I think we answered that in previous sessions, that we have not yet met the target.
That's right, Madam Mayor. You know, every year we review all the NCPs and we do projections. And when we look at the South Newton NCP, we still have to reach the high projection that was done back in 2004.
That's the math of it. So here, I'm going to give a challenge or a request for you. So the numbers say that we shouldn't be 550 over our students, or are we okay with that? And that we shouldn't be 600 over? I guess the reality of it is, we are. This is where we are. Whether we did the math right, whether we did the math wrong, I'm not good at math, so it's okay. I forgive you. We have more kids in our schools than our schools can handle. So let's make a plan and take care of it and move it forward. I highly encourage each and every one of you to go to one of these high schools on the second week of school. Don't go announced. Don't go with your entourages, because I've been there when the entourages come and everybody puts all the stuff away and they make the desks look nice. Show up. Ask for a planner, a day schedule of any student in grade eight, nine, 10, 11, or 12. Picture yourself being this tall and this little and really scared and not knowing where to go. Grab that plan in your hand and try and make it back and forth to those classes in the time that's allotted for you. I honestly wish that each and every one of you would give that a whirl. And then come back and tell me how your day was. Tell me when you got home. How did you feel about yourself? How many people accidentally elbowed you in the head? Did you feel brave enough and strong enough to take on the world? Are you afraid to try out for a basketball team? Because the senior basketball team at Lord Tweedsmere can only have 12 boys on it. They have 2,200 students in their school and room for 12 boys on a team. Where do the kids go that didn't make the team? Where are they? I know where they are. My kid goes to Tweedsmere. I tell you where they are. It's not where you want them to be. You want them to be on the B-team because there's a second gym. You want them to be on another sport. You want them to be in a study session with a teacher, who would do it but can't do it because they have to teach a fifth block. There is so much more we could be doing as a city. We have amazing opportunities. You all have amazing opportunities to be heroes for us right now. And I offer you, and I extend my hand, and say, please, think outside the box. Do it different. Shake some trees. If you want to rattle some provincial trees, there are a lot of families in Surrey that will come right behind you and say, "We need to change it." Change the funding process for a growing community. They haven't done it. You're the biggest. Lead. Make Langley follow you. Make Chilliwack follow you. Lead. We are a school district that's growing, and the cap-funding model that our provincial government has does not support you guys. If you'd like their support and you want to rattle some trees and make it happen, there are a lot of parents here that will stand up and say, yes, we'll follow our mayor and we'll follow our council because we believe that they're leading us in the right direction in getting better capital funding for our schools. Get them out of the portables, get that operating money back in their pockets so they can do what they're good at.
Thank you for your comments. And just let me clarify for you the fact that much of what you're talking about, we share your sentiments, and many of the things that you've raised tonight, we're actually working on. I do not believe in my history in local government, which goes back 30 years, even though I've been only in the political arena of local government for the last 12, 13 years. We are, for the very first time, working directly with the school board to develop a policy change for what it would look like in a fast-growing city. The province has endorsed that, as, please bring it forward, show us what it looks like. But I don't think local government has been in the arena of making policy around when do you build schools. The expectation has always been that those schools would be the arena of the provincial government. They're now asking us, what would you do in a fast-growing city? And we intend on telling them that.
And I agree with you, and I know that you're doing things. And we've heard from the school trustees that you guys are having meetings. Meetings aren't going to help. I have a child in grade six. I would like this done before she graduates. I think you would, too.
Well, I can assure you, we intend on having it in front of the province by the fall.
Fantastic. That's wonderful. Thank you.
And thank you so much for your comments tonight. They echo many of the others that we have heard this evening. And I think there was a gentleman at the back that was coming forward next.
Councillor Woods wants to... Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name's Brian Holden. I live at 1503758th Avenue, with a nice shot of this land. I came here to listen, and I would feel ashamed not to speak up. First of all, the land that's being proposed here was never originally meant to be this land. It was a lot of the density of the housing that's already there. It was done, and a lot of people were sold on the fact that it was going to be a hospital. Then it was going to be a senior center. This is all provincial land, and that's why you have a lot of density. A lot of people bought in thinking, hey, that's a great place for me to be. And it is a great place. Now that it's been distorted and changed, and I'm assuming that the contaminant assessment that was done on the land has cleared it up because I had spoken to a lot of people when they were on-site doing that. I have a few questions just to throw out. I don't expect answers because I'm not sure if they're there, and some of them are sort of addressed to the developers. One of the things about the numbers of the parking and the population, some people were wondering about the YMCA. I used to volunteer at the Y. Their numbers are actually down. They're losing people. And yet, look at all the parking scenarios that are there and the problems. And they're trying to figure out a way to increase their population there. And I've had quite a few meetings with them, being a volunteer there and getting a lot of input. And they were trying to figure out, how can they build up their membership? So you say there's 10,000 people there, but they actually have a proposal for having up to 15,000 members if they can and don't know how to get them sometimes. And I think parking is probably one of the factors. I was listening to some of the numbers given out about that there'd be about 200 students or children entering schools from this project. In 317 units, there's no way you're only going to get 200 students out of that. I don't know how those numbers came about. So again, I listened to the developers, and they mentioned a certain portion of their development money would go somehow to the schools. I've never heard of any of that happening. I'd like to know what amount. Or perhaps the public, general public, we should be asking that question. The one thing that hasn't been addressed is the lack of green space, the loss of the green space and parks. We were also told at one time there's a chance that there would be some park development there because of the amount of housing that's going on in the area. And there's one park that's been developed only, and that's about a kilometer away. And that area is desperately in need of more park space. There is one protected green space behind the townhouses, and it's because it's untouchable. And thank goodness for that. But it's a very small space for the amount of people that live in the area. There was another, and I don't know if somebody already brought this up, about the virtually nonexistent transit, so thus you're going to have more parking problems. And, let's see. Everything else, everybody's already brought up again, so I don't want to go back into it. I'm concerned about this development, knowing that they're planning to do, project as many units as they are without giving thought to infrastructure, because that seems to be the last thing on the agenda. And I'm a retired school teacher, and there's no question that there is not space for any children in the neighborhood now, let alone adding all these units to it. One question you had asked to a gentleman that came up here and spoke against this was about the numbers that are being accommodated. He was mentioning how many new students would be in that area, how many children would go to school. And the question to him was, well, the way the projection of the numbers goes, as you mentioned it, was that, well, there's attrition and then those that come in. That doesn't account for the new ones coming in. That accounts for what's there now. So these new ones that are coming in add on to that, and that's a number that you gave no counting for. If you're going to add more students to it, that's one thing. But if you take the numbers that are there now, that's going to... The students or children that are there entering the schools now, they cover the attrition and more going out the other end. So when you have new students coming in into a project like this, that isn't accounted for in those numbers. And that's all I have to say unless there's questions.
Councillor... Oh, no questions.
Thank you.
At the back, with your hand up? Did you want to speak?
She can pull the microphone down.
Do you want to tell the city clerk what your name is? You don't have to... Yeah. Just give your first name, honey.
I'm Olivia.
Okay, Olivia. It's your turn. You can speak to us. How are you feeling? You're doing this of your own free will, Olivia. You can say whatever you like, honey.
She is concerned about the lack of green space and that animals will be affected as she sees all the bunnies and all the other wildlife in there. And she talks about how her school is overcrowded. Is that anything you want to add to that?
And do you have a backyard with bunnies, hon?
No.
The space by the land that we're talking about has a lot of animals. And she loves to go and see the bunnies. And she gets very upset at the idea that they're going to clear up the land. So this is what she wanted to talk about.
That's good. Have you got anything else?
And our school, we won't have anywhere to, you know, like, play because probably our grass field and our gravel field, they'll probably get crowded with portables. And the only place the whole school will be able to play is the grass field.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. That was well done. Anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? Okay, sir, at the back.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Kyle Branstad from Bunton Associates. I was, I was a consultant on the project to do the traffic impact assessment. We also looked at on-street parking because we understood it was a concern for the neighborhood. So we went out and did a survey for a, on a typical weekday and we did find-
Sir, could you just move that mic a little bit? I'm just having a little difficulty hearing you.
So we went out and did a survey of on-street parking and, you know, we did find that it's 80% full in the weekday evenings. So that's typical of residential demands, probably less to do with the YMCA. That's when visitors and people are coming home from work and parking. What I did want to point out was with the new site plan here, they, with the new street connecting on 58th and the east side of Panorama Drive, there's approximately 115 new on-street parking stalls that will be available. And with the demand of the development, we would anticipate around 50 stalls available for the neighborhood. So it's a surplus and it should be seen as a positive for the neighborhood.
When did you do that traffic study, sir? And during, when you mentioned the evenings, was it weekday evenings?
It was a Thursday evening last year in, in May.
Thank you. Counselor Gill?
Yes. Madam Mayor, just wanted to reconfirm, you indicated there'd be 115 on-street parking stalls and you believe 65 would be utilized by residents that would occupy your-
Yes.
-units and there would be 50 net additional units that would be available for the balance of the community.
That's correct.
And, sorry, that would be at the peak time or that would be at any particular-
That's a peak, that's a kind of, that's a peak ratio that we use. And we measured it off of what, what happens in the neighborhood, basically.
Can you give me the definition of peak? Just, I just really want to understand what days of the week that would be.
Yeah, pretty much Monday to Friday. Looking, the peak happens between 6 o'clock onward.
6:00 PM onwards?
Yeah, about that. You can see like around 4 o'clock, you're maybe half-full and then it picks up once people are coming home from work.
And do you expect, given the neighborhood, that you would expect the balance of those 50 units or 50 parking stalls to be utilized by the balance of the neighborhood? Just given-
The proximity, I would expect, especially along Panorama Drive, along the whole curve of the street.
So my, my question to you, sir, is that given the development that your client is proposing, combined with the existing issues in the neighborhood, is there sufficient parking to meet the neighborhood's demands as that development is fully built out?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I see no other questions. Show of hands for how many-
I think we're more confident than half. I've already spoken at the beginning.
No, sir, you cannot, you can maybe pass that on to somebody else, but once you've spoken once, that's, that's your speaking time. Could I ask you to be respectful of the chamber, please? How many others are, are going to speak to this particular bylaw number two? One more? And anyone after this person, two more? Okay.
Three.
Three more? Three, three, three? Okay, three. Three more. Okay. One, two, three. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Monica and I live 58th Avenue at 153058th. And I actually don't send my kids in the neighborhood. They, we go to Cloverdale. But my concern is the traffic on 152nd and Number 10 Highway. It is an absolute horrendous gong show. I drive it in the morning, bringing the kids to school. And unfortunately, because there is turning lanes into the current complex where the white spot is, they cannot extend the left turning lane onto Highway 10 when you go southbound. And I'm sure all directions have a lot of congestion. And I do believe, I could be wrong, but there is further commercial development on the southeast side of 152nd and Number 10 Highway. So that's going to bring a lot more people into the neighborhood. So, um, yeah, there, um, I know I talked to, I believe it was James Ratakop about the problem at the open house. And he goes, oh, well, the city of Surrey just has to extend the minutes or the seconds of the, of the left turning lane. I said, well, we can't even get in there because the, the two lanes going straight through are so backed up, half of the lane, the left turning lane, you can't even get in there. So you'd have to have at least two long turning left lanes. I, that's just my experience going into Cloverdale at 8:30 in the morning. So those are peak traffic times. And again, in the afternoon, this gentleman here was talking about parking. But the, the traffic in the area, 152nd, Number 10 Highway is just terrible. And my concern is all these extra residents and their visitors and all the people going to the commercial site would just greatly densify that area and making wait times a lot longer. So, um, yes, the development is great, but I agree with less capacity of, of people in that area, like say houses instead of townhouses and apartments. Thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. I think there was a, yeah. Sorry, it's, I know it's rude to point, but I don't know how else to identify you, Ben. You haven't signed up.
Oh, I know. Sorry about that.
Could you give your name and, and address to the city clerk?
Okay, my name is Tammy Brophy. My address is 1489859th Avenue. I wasn't going to speak, but I did want to go on record as opposing this development. I, I don't have anything new to add other than I've lived in the community since 19, or since 2002. I now have a child in the school system. He's going to grade five. He goes to Cambridge. I know what we went through before Goldstone was built, when there were two schools in one. The density, just walking to school was incredible. You couldn't even pass the person in front of you. There was no space. That improved when Goldstone opened, but, and, and, you know, back then there were no field trips, double assemblies. I, I just feel like my child is missing out and now we're, we're heading back there again. I can see the changes happening even in the last year. I'm concerned that he's heading into grade five. He's going to be slated for portables, probably close to for the rest of his school career in this community. And that concerns me greatly because I, I have a sense, and I've gone through this myself in developing areas as a, as a child, portables make you feel like you're on hold. They, they make you feel like you're waiting to get assimilated into the school system. And it's not a good feeling. I, I don't like the thought that he's going to be doing this. And my other concern is where will he go to high school? You know, there was always an assumption he would go to Sullivan Heights and now I'm not so sure. So I fear for, you know, what, what comes with grade eight. And never mention the, the parking. You were asking a gentleman earlier about what does he think about, or parking, somebody mentioned that parking in single-family developments can be worse than parking in townhouse developments because of the secondary suites. I live on a street that has single-family homes and we don't have the same parking issues as 58th Avenue, 57th Avenue, any of those areas, 60th Avenue, where townhouse developments are rampant. And I use that word strongly, they're rampant and there is no space. People are fighting for space along those areas. So I do believe that townhouse complexes do bring worse parking than single-family developments. So I ask you, I urge you to recon, you know, have this reconsidered, to consider our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your comments. And then you in behind, the yellow, in behind the yellow.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Connie Schell, Connie Reed, and I oppose the proposal. I live in the area-
I can't quite hear you.
Okay. My name is Connie Reed. I oppose your proposal and I live in the area. For the first time, I've been to this meeting. I've never been to anything like this before. I see the issue very simply. For those that are for, this is a monetary issue. Those against, a livable issue. I could talk about the school issue for hours and I don't think anybody wants to hear that right now. But what about traffic congestion, limited parking, which I know exists, and quality of life? Until last year, I was part of the silent majority. I feel the silent majority is just given up. There's just so much happening so quickly, we can't keep up to the proposals. I ask you to give more credence to residents that already have a life in this neighborhood rather than those who want to make money and then go home for the night. Also, with regard to the last gentleman that talked about traffic, I was there when there's quite a heated argument about it. And two samples were used, people that were a lot more knowledgeable than I was because I could tell by what they were saying, that they were saying it was laughable. Living in that area, there is no room. It's too high density. Thank you.
Thanks a lot for your comments. Cindy.
It was you. I couldn't, sorry, I need my, I need my glasses on or I need my glasses off, so I'm never quite sure where. Good evening.
Good evening. Okay, so this is a bit disjointed because I'm also responding to some of the comments that were made and I'll, I'll start with those and then go into my, what I wrote. Rob King referred to the YMCA, talking about the fact that they're, they're not at capacity and whatnot. But have you ever heard of a nonprofit organization that ever says they're at capacity? Why would the YMCA ever turn away a membership? It wouldn't make sense financially for them. Parking is an issue, as mentioned before. This development adds to that issue. Rob also mentioned that we try, you know, we have tried to work with the developer, but they really haven't budged. As Sonia said before, we have worked with developers with great success, but this is not the case with this developer. We have, we've gotten nowhere and we have tried. The parking, I can't remember his name, but the person who came and did this study and said that 65 parking is for residents, doesn't develop, don't development have to make sure that there is a parking space in their, in their units enough for the residents? Is that not a requirement?
Of course, and I believe this is the case with relative to the, that, but I'll just confirm with the planner, each of those townhouse units have-
That's correct, Madam Mayor.
They have garage parking, no parking pads. No parking pads in that townhouse complex. So that means they only have garage parking or street parking.
So they have garage parking and visitor parking, correct?
That's correct, Madam Mayor.
Visitor parking is not for residents.
No, it's for visitors.
Right. So what I'm saying to you is that they're building townhouses with no parking pads outside of them. So people that are going to use these townhouses are going to also have stuff, stuff for their garages. If you drive anywhere in Surrey, people use their garages for stuff and not for their vehicles. So that 65 parking for residents on the street isn't adequate, let alone the 115 to, to meet the needs of the community.
Can I just, I'm sorry to interrupt you-
No, please, please.
I have a speaker list here. I see Counselor Woods has a question.
Sure.
Actually, Madam Mayor, my question was for the lady that spoke before, Jennifer, I think her name was. And I'd like to wait till the speaker's finished-
Okay.
Because then I'm going to ask her questions about Victoria. Thank you.
Okay. I can also talk to Victoria because I was one of the people there as well. When the, the study was done, he said it was done a year ago. Has anything been taken into consideration, all of the development since then? Because we have had considerable construction since then. So I don't think that that, those numbers are relevant anymore, nor do I feel that they're accurate. At peak rush hour right now, it already takes at least three cycles of the light to get through north and south on 152nd in its current state. According to a Realtor that's in the audience today, they get requests for adult-oriented facility or buildings, which is what is requested most often. Oh, what else have I got here? In regards to the leasing of the complex that's behind, beside this development, if you notice, there's new leasing that's happened on the east side of 152nd, on the south side of Highway 10. And they're pretty plentiful. And I can tell you why, there's people not going to the, the spaces up there. It's due to the leasing company. They have stringent rules. You'll notice that Big Ridge moved out of that property, particularly because of the issues that they were having with the leasing company. And they went kitty corner to the southeast corner and, and set up shop there instead. So it has much more to do with the leasing company and that few want to do business in there. It's not a lack of community members there to support. Mr. Fawcett mentioned about having a certain type of people that come and rent the apartments and I, I have to challenge that. How can he guarantee who's going to be there? He can't. Better yet, isn't it against rental standards to be specific to a demographic? Absolutely. It's discriminatory. And the affordability will determine who arrives and rents those places. And right now, I can tell you, as mentioned before, it'll be the single parents that want to stay within our community and love our school system. Okay, I think I'm, I have one question for you. You mentioned that you have received only about 15 pieces of communication on this project?
On table for this evening.
On the table for this evening. What about communications via email?
Everyone has received email and other correspondence.
Do you know approximately how many?
No.
Okay. Because it kind of makes it sound like we didn't, our community didn't speak up, even though they're not able to be here, that they didn't speak up when you say there was only 15 for tonight. Well, there was probably hundreds.
Yeah, that's for the advantage of the, of the council that they know on table, there's 15 pieces of communication and, and X number of people wishing to speak or not wishing to speak.
Okay.
So I just-
Thank you for that clarification. Because I was concerned that only 15 residents spoke up and I'm like, I know I've sent at least two emails myself. That wouldn't be cool. Okay, so here we go. Again, I'm here to ask, where will the kids go to school? I know that's my tagline now, but it is what it is. I'm very concerned about the grand scale of this project and the catastrophic implications for our community. We simply are not set to accommodate the number of children that will come from this development. We know that Ratakop states that they are projecting less than 80 students, but when we count the number of children in many of our current townhome complexes, we have far more elementary students per unit. Elementary students per unit, not even considering the high school yet. Let alone the fact that with housing prices these days, more of these rental units will have children as well. I implore you to look at other projects of similar size in our community and look at the actual numbers of school-aged children that live in them because you will see that they are way more than what's projected. I mentioned at the last city council meeting I attended, that our population growth is well beyond what the NCP stated. I was told that wasn't true and that the NCP was amended in 2004. I was not provided, even though I requested the information, a newly published population Hold on, I wrote a note on that. In the only document I could find, the NCP amendment proposal, it states that a maximum of addition of 4,500 to the population. So essentially, since we are over 21,000 in this community, we are now at the projected population. This does not take into account this development proposal nor the large number of other proposals in this community. Further, there's mention about the number of units. You talk about units, but not population, but it's really the number of people that count, not the units. I see that Ratakop has stated that they left, have left room in a number of units to have elevator shafts put in if needed and that this would draw an older demographic. If, besides the fact that there are three levels and that makes no sense, if Ratakop really wanted to market to the 55-plus crowd, they would do actually just that, market to the 55-plus crowd and call the project a senior-oriented community. Do not be fooled by the option because they are absolutely gearing this project to families. Ratakop states, "The school district's five-year capital plan includes new space requests for both Sullivan Elementary and Sullivan Heights Secondary School." "The provincial government also recently announced the capital project approval for an addition to the Sullivan Elementary School," end quote. But this isn't accurate. The five-year plan in which the capital project approval for an addition was made from, was from before this project was on the table and was not a consideration in that five-year plan. "The addition approved by the province in their paltry funding announcement will only see the current students in portables come out of their portables and not all of them either." The addition does not meet the, meet the needs of the evoke- The addition does not meet the needs of the Evoque complex of 86 townhouses, which is already half-built and partially occupied, and directly across the street from Sullivan Elementary. Nor does it include the development proposal 15-0210 for 20 townhouses, let alone a project of this size. Further, Sullivan Heights is currently so overcrowded that they literally are not taking any new students. Who knows when we will receive additional funding for more schools and additions in our community that would meet the needs of the current students, let alone the new students from these projects? James Radicop stated that not moving forward would multiply the issues right now of panic and housing and values skyrocketing. There are two issues, housing affordability and availability. Has Radicop talked to you about the price point for these townhouse units? I know they have spoken about affordable housing, but I can't imagine these townhouses will come in under $450,000 each. Is that what you would call affordable? And the rental units, how much would they be for, for monthly? Is it really the answer to the need for affordable housing? No, it's not. I've already talked previously about the link between community and connection and the role that plays in our society. While the gang issue seems to have died down a bit in the media for the time being, I remind you that the correlation between the gang issues and other crime issues and our education is very strong. When our, when our schools are overcrowded and students are fighting for the same resources, be it the basketball team, be it the book, yearbook committee, they lose connection with positive peers and teachers and the schools. When a child loses a connection with their community, be it their family, their schools, or their community, they seek connection elsewhere and end up down the wrong path. We will not get a hold of the crime issues until we start ensuring our children are connected through education and family. You have an opportunity to play a proactive role in our community. Yes, it will take years to see the fruits of that labor, but if you're in it for more than your term here, you will see this through. I will continue to stand before you regarding each and every development proposal for our community. I have to. I've already seen our amazing French immersion program at my daughter's school be cut in half because of the capacity issues in the neighborhood, and I don't accept it. I certainly will not stand here and tolerate more development in our neighborhood when we do not have the infrastructures in place. I again hold each of you personally and professionally responsible for each and every development proposal that is pushed through in our community. Your constituents of this neighborhood have been very loud and very clear. We do not have room in our schools for more children. If you want to know what to tell people wanting to live here, tell them this. We're going to take care of our community and get them where they need to be before we welcome more in. We literally do not have the space for you at this time, and want to make sure that when spaces open up, it comes with the infrastructures required for you to have a home in our amazing city. At the end of the day, when you ask me a question like Counselor Gill did, what would you tell people wanting to live here? I'd throw that question back at each of you and ask you, what about the people that already live here? Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Counselor Woods?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Is your question of...
My question is for Cindy.
Okay.
Very good. Actually, I was going to direct it to the lady that was up before, I think her name was Jennifer. But since Cindy, you did go to Victoria, and I read that in the paper and read many of your emails, I read them all.
Thank you.
I just wanted to just clarify one thing, because Jennifer was pretty clear when she was challenging, throwing out a challenge, that there needs to be a new way of thinking with regards to school. And our mayor has initiated, hopefully, some sort of planning that will result in this new way of thinking. But when Jennifer was speaking, she talked about developers supplying land to build new schools on. Now, that's all fine and good, but when you went to Victoria, did you float that idea to the provincial politicians? And if you did, well, could you tell us what their response was?
We sort of talked about it. We had about 25 minutes with Mike Bernier, and there was only a couple of us in the room. We did float that there's either, there's other options out there, and he didn't really respond. But I will say this, I mean, I love the creativity, and I'm so glad that you're thinking outside the box and looking for solutions too. But after I met with you, Mayor Hepner, I was thinking more about that idea, and if the province was in a position to pay back developers at some point, why wouldn't they just give the money now? You know, I'm concerned about what their response is going to be, and I think you definitely need to go forward with the proposal. I think you need to go forward with something creative, and I really support you in doing that, and will support you all the way. But I do feel like their response, this liberal government, I believe the response will be no.
Madam Mayor? Thank you. Because I'm sure you know this, but the dilemma that I find myself in is that if you were to get land from a developer, okay, who's going to build a school? There's got to be capital to build a school, but more important, there has to be year after year operating.
Yep.
Thank you.
And that's, that's the challenge. And I will say this too, is that the province will then start to rely on the city and the developers to do that, and it becomes that privatization that we might want to steer away from. So there's lots of challenges.
Thank you for recognizing that that's not our, yes.
There's lots of challenges surrounding it too, but it's creative thinking, and it might get them to start thinking outside the box a little bit more themselves.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think there was an earlier question relative to how much development pays, and it is $1,000 per every unit of housing that is upfront contributed to schools as well as...
Yeah, that's called the site acquisition charges, and that goes into the land use reserve.
Yes.
Yeah.
Counselor Villanueva also has a question.
I appreciate your position. I understand it well, and I know in the public, council's being blamed for the fact that there's overcrowded schools. When, in reality, and I will say that I saw in the press with the finance minister blaming councils for not densifying, and therefore we don't have affordable housing, yet at the same time, they're not providing the funds that we need for our schools. So you have lobbied us hard and told us clearly that you don't want any more people in your neighborhood until this is addressed. And I know you marched to Victoria to talk to Bernier, but I'm wondering what kind of impact that you've had with the MLAs who are representing you here in the city, and what have they done to take your word to Victoria, and what has that response been?
Marvin Hunt has done nothing. Nothing. I look at all the Hansard reports.
Okay, I just wondered if there had been a concerted lobby with the MLAs here to represent you.
We started there and got nowhere, so we moved on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments this evening.
Did you have...
Yeah, no.
I was...
Don't make it political.
No, I won't. I just wondered if you were putting pressure on them.
I am looking now to see if, do I have one, you sir, are the, you haven't spoken yet this evening, have you, sir? No.
One over there.
And you haven't spoken either, sir? Is there anyone else? You three are the last speakers of the evening.
Hi, I'm the mayor, fellow councillors. My name is James Radicop. I'm a partner in Radicop Panorama Homes. We have heard the concerns of the neighborhood residents. School overcrowding is an issue. We understand that, a very real concern. We're aligned with them on this issue. It has been ours as well. We joined a delegation to Victoria, which you've heard about, led by the local Panorama Neighborhood Association, and met with the education minister.
Please let the speaker...
Yeah.
Yeah. He didn't interrupt you. Thank you, sir.
And as a result of everyone's efforts, including yours, help in the way of $100 million came to Surrey schools. The work is not done, but it's a big step in the right direction. You have heard the neighborhood's school concerns, but there are other concerns that have been overlooked until tonight. Housing affordability and housing availability have been talked about and are very real concerns here and elsewhere in Metro Vancouver. The health and sustainability of local businesses is a very real concern, requiring the support of a growing residential population. Many of you on council are multi-term council members. Your vision for this city began many years ago, and you developed a plan to bring that vision to reality. Surrey is now the fastest-growing city in B.C. and is expected to surpass Vancouver in the next decade. With that growth come challenges. Challenges you anticipated and challenges you are providing solutions for. Namely, for school capacity issues, $100 million is coming, and the pressure is still on for more. And you're taking a proactive approach for the planning and building of new schools. With this growth, traffic pressures increase, and you have a plan in place for state-of-the-art light rapid transit. When all we heard in the news about Surrey was another shooting, you aggressively took action and dealt with it. Planned growth, manageable growth, is healthy. It makes for vibrant communities. It allows good businesses to thrive and has schools full of children. Yes, full. Not in danger of being shut down. Good growth naturally builds community safety. Caring residents with eyes on the parks, roads, and schools. This is effective policing. With good growth, there will be school and traffic and amenity pressures, but those are good problems that good government can deal with, and you have and you are. Our proposed development at 5750 Panorama Drive is a thoughtfully planned community that has come to be through the guidance of your planning, engineering, and parks departments. A two-year collaborative effort that has resulted in a master plan that fits and belongs at this site. Thank you for considering our proposal.
Counselor Woods has a question for you, sir.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Sir, can you tell me, with regards to the townhouses there, the smallest unit, what you're anticipating they would sell for?
We haven't put any prices on these units.
You haven't put any prices on yet?
No.
So really, your statement that it's affordable housing, what's your definition of affordable housing, sir?
What people can afford.
What people can afford.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Secondly, sir, there's been some comments with regards from the community that your organization simply has not worked with the community members. Can I get a response from you as to those accusations?
Yes, we've met on several occasions, as they attested to. One of the recommendations from them, reasonable density for this site was 31 large family lots. Now, since that, I've heard them suggest small, single-family houses. 31 single-family lots on a site like this doesn't make sense to us. What we've come up with is something that we've worked with, with your various departments, and believe this is the right mix for this area.
Well, you didn't really answer my question, my view, but thank you very much.
See no other questions for you, Mr. Radicop? Thank you. You, sir, at the back, by the doorway?
Madam Mayor, councillors, I've watched this development for some time, and I have a different...
Your name and address for the record.
Oh, sorry. Peter Lawongo. Now just moved out of this area into another municipality, previously living off 163A Street.
Not in Surrey?
Not at this time. I was in Surrey just shortly ago. I'm bringing this up mostly from the perspective of a parent and a grandparent, and I have a different perspective than some of the folks that have spoken here already. I'm not a developer. I have watched this development for some time with an eye towards my own children buying property, getting a chance to start a young family in an area like this. I've watched this area, watching my mom's, my wife's mother needing a place to move as a senior, trying to keep our family in a position where they can afford to buy, where they can afford to have housing. And I find this development as an example, it's not the only one, but as an example of a development that in fact checks the boxes. It gives an opportunity for young families to get a start. Again, whether the pricing is at $400,000 or less than that or more than that is going to be determined by the market, but an opportunity to get housing where they would not be able to afford it on the other side of the Fraser. I see this development for seniors, for folks who need assistance with housing, and certainly for families with three bedrooms as a necessary part of their moving forward. I see this development as a very positive step. I would hope that some consideration would be given. I know that there are issues around schooling that is evident in a few communities, Surrey being one of the predominant ones. I don't want to be Pollyannaish or naive, but I do have a sense that if in fact the population is there, the changes will have to come to the schooling system. And I just believe that this is an example of a development that addresses the community's needs, and I would ask you to consider approving this development.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Okay, you, sir, I think I had you on the point list a little earlier.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you, mayor, council members? Thank you for listening to me. My name is Colvinder Parmar. I live in Panorama Ridge, 13014, 56th Avenue. I wasn't going to speak, but just listening to every gentleman just right before me. I have a young family, three young boys, and I have my mother that I'm trying to find a place for, and this project is perfect for her. She can help me with the kids. I've got other friends as well that would like their grandparents to be in the area, and they can't afford anything. And whether it be $450,000 or $500,000, I think that this project again checks all the boxes, and I think young families, older families, older couples that need to help out, I think it's a great location, and we're being priced out of South Surrey. $800,000 townhomes in South Surrey, we can't do it. For my mother to downsize and to find something, this is perfect and checks all the boxes. So I support the project and hope you guys would do the same. Thank you.
Sir, are you talking about the townhouse?
Townhouse projects, yes.
Or the rental apartments?
The townhouse projects.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Beverly Houdam. I live at 14942 57th Avenue. I am literally eight houses up from the YMCA. I have a young, we have a young son who goes to Cambridge. He first kindergarten, so we're very excited. We're very saddened that there's so many students. There's not enough room. There's just not enough room for everybody. It's a great concern. We adamantly oppose this development. Our infrastructure can't, can't hold it. There's not enough space for people to live. In response to James Radicop, first, it was the South Newton Community Group that went to Victoria, not the Panorama Neighborhood Association. The school board and superintendent, Jordan Tinney, made it very clear that we did not have a hand in the funding announcement. Just wanted to make those couple of corrections. And I wasn't planning on talking. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you for coming forward and speaking tonight. One more hand, I think I saw, no, you've...
No, I just wanted to clarify.
No, there's no clarification. The public hearing is a chance to tell us what you think of the land use, and it's only once. So is there anyone else who has not yet spoken that wishes to speak? Perhaps somebody could ask your question for you or clarify for you if there's no one that... Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, bylaw number three, please. Is zoning amendment bylaw 18768, the address is 7825 and 7843 128th Street. The applicants are 576624BC Limited, Alderwick Ventures Limited, 525448BC Limited, Paparone's Pizza and Chicken, 646451BC Limited. The applicants are seeking to rezone the site from one-acre residential to comprehensive development. The applicant is seeking to develop two multi-tenant industrial buildings on the site. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought to permit two freestanding signs along 128th Street in order to assist motorists in locating the entrance. I have no one signed up to speak to this bylaw, nor do I have anyone that has written correspondence for us this evening on this bylaw. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number three on the agenda this evening?
Is zoning amendment bylaw 18770. The address is 1408 260th Avenue. The applicant Sullivan Six Developments Limited. The applicant is seeking to rezone the property from one-acre residential to single-family residential twelve. The applicant seeking to subdivide the property into six single-family small lots. And in addition, a development variance permit is being sought to reduce the lot width for proposed Lot One and allow driveway access from 141st Street for proposed Lot Three to Six in order to maintain a consistency in the streetscape.
There is no one signed up to speak to this bylaw. Is there anyone wishing to speak to Bylaw Number Four? First call, second call, this is the final call. Madam Clerk, next bylaw.
Zoning text amendment bylaw 18753. And it's to amend the zoning bylaw 12,000 in order to regulate the location of the coops used to house hens and the number of hens on residential lots that are less than an acre but greater than 7,200 square feet as described in corporate report R141.
And again, I have no one signed up to speak to this bylaw. Anyone wishing to speak to Bylaw Number Five? First call, second call, this is the last call. That concludes the public hearing portion of our agenda. Moving on to committee reports, social policy advisory committee.
I'll move the minutes of the social policy meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, that's carried. Move minutes be received for Public Safety Committee, April 11.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, that's carried. Move minutes be received for Senior Advisory and Accessibility Committee, May 10.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, that's carried. Move minutes be received for Senior Advisory and Accessibility Committee, May 10.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
I'll move the minutes of the Cultural Development Advisory Committee.
Second.
On May 17.
All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried.
And I'll move the minutes of the Social Policy Advisory Committee of May 18.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And I'll move the recommendation coming out of those minutes.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. And that is a letter to UBCM regarding...
One more, Madam Mayor. Surrey Heritage. I move the minutes from the 18th of May, 2016. Be received.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And move the recommendations be adopted.
Second.
And all those in favor, opposed, carried. To corporate reports, I have no proclamations this evening, so I'll move directly into the corporate reports. R142, Water System Annual Report.
Move recommendations.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate report R143, Ward of Contract, Miscellaneous Utility Improvements, Padre Contracting, in the amount of $2,266,950.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate report R144, Ward of Contract, for the Street Coastal Flood Protection Strategy to Northwest Hydraulic Consultants, for $629,884.50.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried.
Move corporate report R145, Closure of Road Allowance Adjacent to 10346132 Street and 10347 and 10357133 Street.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate report R146, Acquisition of Property at 1215275 Avenue, in the amount of $250,000.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate report R147, Acquisition of Property at 16530 Fraser Highway, in the amount of $835,912.
Second. In favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate report R148, The 2015 Statement of Financial Information.
Second, second. All those in favor, opposed, that's carried.
Move corporate report R149, Report of Council Renumeration and Expense Payments for 2015.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate report R150, Funding Request for Surrey Hospice and Outpatient Center, in the amount of $15,000.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate report R151, Funding Request for the West Coast Center for Learning, in the amount of $2,000.
Second. In favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate report R152, Sponsorship Request for Darben Extraordinary Cheats, in the amount of $5,000.
Second. Those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate report R153, Sponsorship Request for the Munich Society, Surrey Live Well Street, fair, in the amount of $2,500.
Second. Those in favor, any opposed, carried.
Move corporate report R154, Sponsorship Request, 10th Annual Red FM Charity Walk, in the amount of $5,000.
Second. All those in favor, any opposed, that's carried.
Move corporate report R155, Shade Tree Management Plan.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried. I think that's actually worth stopping for a moment and just acknowledging Counselor Hayne, the work that has been done relative to the shade management plan. I appreciate all of the work from Parks and Rec and the numbers of shade trees that are making a difference in our streets and the work that engineering has done as well because it's an enormous planting job, and you can start to see the fruition around the city. Funding request?
I'm gonna move Recommendation 156 for the funding request for the International City of Refugee Network Cultural Grant Program.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Madam Mayor, I'm gonna move corporate report R157, The Proposed Amendments to the Surrey TE Protection Bylaw.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Counselor Gill.
Madam Mayor, just I wanna thank Deb Jack for all her hard work on encouraging council to make those amendments, so thank you, Deb.
Higher fees. You were heard. Then zoning bylaw amendment for single-family.
I'll move the recommendation.
All the, a second or?
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried.
And finally, Madam Mayor, move corporate report R159, The Gilford Town Center 104 Avenue Planning Program.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried. That will advance our LRT line for that, so I'm glad to see that come forward. Okay, business arising.
Madam Mayor, I'm gonna move third reading on H1.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. What is the will of council for H2? Counselor Gill.
Madam Mayor, I personally agree with and support the land use that's being proposed by the applicant, but I want to be very clear. I wanna thank the residents for coming out today and rattling the trees. I think that we all have a common goal, given that we all understand that the school board and the provincial government have a role in resolving this problem. So what I'm going to do, Madam Mayor, today, if I may, I'm gonna move that we refer back to staff to work with the applicant and the school district to see how the phasing of the project will or could coincide with the school capital plan implementation for South Newton. And I'm hoping that we can have some serious level of conversation with the school board and the provincial government and really relook at, you know, what's happening in our neighborhoods. I think that, you know, I'm personally very happy with what happened today. I think that, you know, the residents came out today, they've expressed their concerns. I think that with this dialogue that we're having with the residents, we are all on the same page, we have the same common goal, and I'm very hopeful that we can get a resolution that's gonna satisfy everyone in the community.
So refer back for phasing. Do I have a second or?
Second.
Okay. Do you wanna speak, let's speak to the motion. Counselor Villeneuve.
Well, Madam Mayor, it was a similar motion that I was gonna put forward because I'm certainly not prepared to support the land use tonight with the issues in the community. And if this project was in isolation and actually in the location that it is, next to the shopping center, next to the Y, on transit, with a rental project that we desperately need in the city, we have none in this area, south of 72nd, and with the proposal for some units that are larger for larger families and some that the town housing affordable. But as the neighbors said, the area is very dense, and it's actually been a concern of mine for a while in the South Newton area, and the schools are overcrowded. So I appreciate, and I mentioned earlier, that province wants councils to densify so to keep the affordable housing partially available for young families trying to get in. We have a responsibility to the community, just like they do. And somehow, this issue has to be worked out. And yes, I know that our mayor and city manager and the school district are working on a funding formula to propose to the government, and I think that's a good thing because this has been an issue since the late 1980s, since I've been on council. The same old funding formula has given the same old problems. So at this time, with the south of the Fraser growth that is going to take place, I think the province can no longer ignore the fact that people now in communities, and we are going to be densifying, they have a responsibility to meet those obligations. We do send a lot of money to the province through our school taxes, through our building fees, through the PST, and the city deserves our funding back in this community to meet our needs. So I think this project gives us an incredible opportunity to have that discussion in a real manner. And that's the only way that I will look at supporting the densification of this site because it was outside of the current NCP, which had several amendments. But I think it's a very good project. I appreciate the quality of the Reddickop developers. I think that there could have been probably more give and take with the community, and there still may have to be. But I'm interested in the rental project. I just know how many people cannot afford to even begin to buy, and we as a city need to start addressing that very seriously. And this is not even a subsidized rental project, so that's what attracted me to this project in the beginning. So I do support the referral back, but seriously, there has to be serious discussion and some commitments. I think the timing is good. There's a provincial election in the spring. I think this council and residents need to call for our share, fair share of funding, and it's time to do that. So I support the move back to have a serious discussion with the school district and otherwise to adjust the density of this project to meet the needs of the neighborhood.
Thanks, Counselor. Counselor Woods.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm hoping that in the report that comes back from staff, that they would also address the number of projects that we have in that area.
I think we talked about that earlier this evening, that we were going to have a meeting to discuss that both in Grandview and in this area.
And in Newton?
Yeah, we'll make that, we'll make that in both areas.
Very good.
If that works for you.
That does work for me. That's good, thank you.
We're gonna do that at a workshop session.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Hayne.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. And I'm gonna be supporting the referral back to staff. I think the project is good, and Counselor Villeneuve spoke broadly of it, particularly with the rental building and so on, there's some mixed use there that I think is worthy and valuable. And while it is a change in the NCP from being institutional in the hopes of, from the provincial government at some point, that there was gonna be a hospital there to the fact that that's just not the case, and so it is going to be mixed-use commercial residential. I think it behooves us to come up with a project that is not only suitable for the market but suitable for the existing community. And I wanna speak to the schools for a moment because not all of us up here can't remember when we sent our kids to high school. My daughter got out of Tweedsmere two years ago, so very familiar with the current state of our high schools and particularly in the Cloverdale area. But as Counselor Villeneuve said, the funding formula that we find ourselves in in Surrey simply doesn't work, and it hasn't worked for a very long time. And when my son first went into Tweedsmere, I'm counting up nine or 10 years ago, all the grade eights didn't dare try and go to the Common or the Caff or anything, they just sat in the hall. And so some of the stories that I was hearing by one of the ladies there just sort of brought it back to me as far as what sort of, the stories I was getting about life in high school, and it hasn't changed. It simply hasn't changed. And so, all that to say that we've been in an overcrowding situation for a long, long time, and it hasn't gotten better. Has it gotten appreciably worse? In some areas it has, in some areas it has not. And I think the school district has done a lot of work to try and balance and move things around, move programs around to try and accommodate shifting demographics. But clearly, the funding formula for our school system is not working, and we do have an opportunity to look at getting steady, predictable funding that we can count on. And here we are, the Surrey School District's putting back $25 million of its own money that it saved and that it worked on in order to get $100 million worth of funding, whereas New Westminster last week just got $100 million and said, "Here you go," and we're just replacing the high school that was already there. So clearly, that's not a level playing field, that's not where we need to be as a growing district. And we are growing, and we will continue to grow because we do represent the affordable housing in the lower mainland. And so that's a reality, and we have to work very hard with our provincial counterparts to make sure that there's a predictable, fair, and equitable source of funding. And I know, Madam Mayor, that you are working on that with the city manager and with the school district to come up with that. So we are being proactive here, and so I want to give this project sufficient time with staff so that we can get some of those things in place and so we can get some of that assurance with the provincial government as we move forward. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Hayne. That was in support of the referral to phase with the school. Counselor Steele.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I too am in favor of sending this back to staff for further discussion. I think it's really important now that we have dialogue going with the neighborhood, with city council, with the school board, with the province, and it seems to me that this is a golden opportunity to take full advantage of that and make sure it works out. This is a project in my mind that deserves this discussion. There was a gentleman that stood up and said he had his children, his mother was looking for a place to stay. The idea of seniors housing in the same area is very appealing to me, and I think the rental housing is really important. And it, to me, just sounds like a project that really needs to work, and I think it can. And I think this is the first time in a long time that we've really had open dialogue and buy-in from the government, the council, the school board, community, most importantly, the community who has really forced probably all of us to do this. So I'm hoping to see great things come from this, working together and put together this project, which I think is well worthy of saving. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Starchuk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll take the time out to thank everybody that stepped up to the mic to provide their input, whether or not you were in support or not in support, because what it really comes down to is providing your ideas and some of the thoughts that have come forward. I just, I wanna make sure that with regards to the developers that are there, that they have listened to some of the things that council has talked about with regards to amenity space and other things like that. So there is some room that's been made, and whether or not we can get to the complete other side, I'm not sure. But if we don't ask for it to go back, we know what that answer is. So we have to give, put the mechanism in place for it to go that way. So I'm supportive of where this is going in a referral.
I appreciate your comments, Counselor Starchuk. And I'm going to call the question for revert, I can't speak anymore, I need to drink a water myself, for referral back relative to the phasing being in synergy with the school construction and a report back to council. All those in favor of that referral? Any opposed? And that is carried.
Move third on three, Madam Mayor.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Also on three, move that council supports the issuance of DVP 7914034700 on final adoption of the related bylaw.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, that's carried.
Move third on four.
Second. All those in favor, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Woods.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Is this on four?
The development variance?
Yeah, number four.
Okay, yeah.
This also is in the Newton or the Panorama area that again is under severe school pressures. And I would like to make a motion to refer this back to staff, and we get a report again from them with regards to the development proposals that have been approved and the school situation in the area.
Okay, is there a second or for that?
I'll second that.
Okay, anyone want to speak to that motion? Seeing, oh, Counselor Gill.
Madam Mayor, this particular project is, I believe, a six-unit, single-family subdivision that's being proposed. We didn't have anybody that came out to the public hearing, but that being said, I think that the DVP that's being asked for is reasonable. that the, the DVP that's being asked for is reasonable. I won't be supporting Counselor Woods' motion.
Thank you. I'm calling the question. All those in favor?
Of the motion?
Of the motion, of Counselor Woods' motion.
To refer?
Yeah.
To refer it back for the driveway with some. Okay, in favor? In opposition?
Contrary.
Contrary.
Move third on four, Madam Mayor.
Second. All those in favor?
Opposed.
All those in opposition? Carried.
Also on four, Madam Mayor, move that council support the issuance of DVP 7914031400 upon final adoption.
Second. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Opposed.
That's carried.
Move third on five, Madam Mayor.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried.
Madam Mayor.
Is that the chickens?
Move DVP 7916016700 be approved?
Second. All those in favor? Opposed, carried.
Move final adoption at number seven.
Second. Um, okay, final on seven. All those in favor? Opposed, carried.
On eight, Madam Mayor, move first.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed, carried.
Move second.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed, carried.
Move third.
Second. All those in favor? In opposition? Carried.
On number nine, which is the move dedication of higher-end portion of road adjacent at 1622196B Avenue and several other properties, move first.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed, carried.
Move second.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed, carried.
Move third.
Second.
In favor? Opposed, carried.
And on number 10, Madam Mayor, on the Surrey Tree Protection Bylaw Amendments, move first.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried.
Move second.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed, carried.
And move third.
And all those in favor? Opposed, carried.
On number 11, Madam Mayor, on the text amendments, move introduction.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed, carried.
Move first.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed, carried.
Move second.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed, carried.
Move public hearing be set for July 11th, 2016.
Second. And all those in favor? Opposed, carried. Delegation request.
From the Y at CIT.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed, carried.
And there's one on table.
And another delegation request on table, downtown Surrey BIA.
I'll move they be heard at CIT.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed, carried.
And Madam Mayor, if we have any backup for that before that delegation, I would appreciate that from staff.
Yeah.
On the status of that.
Yes, perhaps prior to that delegation appearing, we do get a status report on where we are relative to that.
On this shelter.
That, that shelter location. Bylaw officer appointments for summer park patrols?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried.
And move three, the conferences for the 2017 CEU Ex-woke Summer Design Jam, August 21st.
Second.
Move to the resolution proven council of Frank's tenants.
All those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. That's to expand our understanding of social innovation, so I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor, I just got one on.
Oh, sorry, any other new business? Counselor Hayne.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to ask through you that staff bring back a report to us with respect to Parkland and City Center. If we'll recall, in, in the NCP and City Center, at just sort of the entrance to Innovation Boulevard, there was a piece of city-owned land that in the NCP was listed, it was designated as an urban park. And as Innovation Boulevard grows where they're into City Center Two, construction now, and of course, that's going to go to City Center Eight eventually. So with, council rezoned that particular site to institutional, and we have a, a great opportunity that's going to be coming into that location. So that removes the opportunity for that to revert back to park space. So I'm asking through you, Madam Mayor, if staff could report back to us on where we could find some park space in City Center as we start to complete the build-out of Innovation Boulevard and, and so on, and look for a, a small urban park space that, that people can enjoy in their lunch hours and so on, working in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, within that zone. I think that's a good idea for where else could it be located outside of the arena that we now have a great project going on. Counselor Gill.[1718.13]